Board meeting, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the regular board meeting?
So moved, by second.
John Christensen.
Yay.
Chris DeLuca.
Yay.
Kathy Howland.
Aye.
Anne Och.
Yay.
A.J. Wilson.
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, first up, we have a donation to Pleasant View Middle School Ag Program from Pueblo County Farm Bureau. Sherry Chuzain?
Good evening, no?
It goes to YouTube.
Okay.
We can hear you.
You hear it? Okay, I'll just use my coach voice.
There you go.
Good evening, I thought I was done with all this school board stuff, but I'm back.
We're glad to see you back.
Yeah. Two weeks ago, actually one week ago, 5-3, the Pueblo Farm Bureau came in and donated $750 to our VoAg program. And Mrs. Powell, and she was thrilled and jumped up and down, she could now buy chickens, she said. So, she's planning on buying chickens and different types of things for our kids. Right now, she's got guinea pigs, so this was unexpected, and she was thrilled to have it done. So, just wanted to present it to the board, $750 from the Pueblo County Farm Bureau.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have some donations to Rye High School, Mrs. McRae.
Good evening, we have two donations for Rye High School. The first one I'll start with is the same as Sherry Chuzain just presented. But at Rye High School, the Pueblo County Farm Bureau surprised Mr. Bemen with a really large check, and we're happening to have an assembly, so he was surprised with this large check of $500 towards his program, which is well deserved because that is definitely a flourishing program up at our school, and we're very proud of it. The other donation that I am presenting tonight is our senior, Amelia Burbage. She received a $1,000 scholarship from San Isabel. Then we went to the scholarship dinner, she was surprised with the PowerUp Scholarship, which is an additional $4,000 from San Isabel, and what came along with that additional scholarship was a $500 check awarded to the school. I asked Amelia to please choose where she wanted that $500 to go, and she chose our athletic program, where she has interned as an aide with our athletic trainer for many years, and often works alongside her at our games. So that is where she asked to give that money to Rye High School, so we're pleased also for that program.
Nice, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to accept the gifts as presented?
So moved, by second.
John Christensen.
Yay.
Chris DeLuca.
Yay.
Kathy Howland.
Aye.
Anne Och.
Yay.
A.J. Wilson.
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation of CTE highlights. Mr. Hershon and Mrs. Coletti.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to present this evening. You know, this is, the presentation is really an opportunity to highlight our CTE programs, but it's really also a celebration. So I want to, before I even get started, I just want to make sure that, that we take some time to just celebrate all of you in the room, board, all the directors, principals, academy coordinators, our teachers, because our CTE programs are really robust, and they're truly thriving because of the work that you've already put in place. And we're just, we're just really working hard to grow those and improve those. So I just wanted to give you all around applause, I mean, everyone's room, our leaders, it's really amazing. So, with that, tonight, thanks, no one else wanted to? Alright, so, in this presentation, I will have kind of an overview of what CTE is, then we're going to dig into what programs we have, and what are, what are some next steps? How are we going to grow the programs and improve them? So, go ahead and go to the next slide.
If I can get it to go, sorry.
That's alright, so just a little bit about CTE. The really, the students dig into technical skills, and the programs that we have really prepare them for career, high-demand career fields. Really, if you think about it, it's getting students prepared for college and career pathways. Both preparing them for opportunities in those, in those fields at the secondary level, as well as, you know, possibly trades, if that's the direction they want to go. So it takes content, and it takes the success skills, the soft skills, and really marries those, those together. Some of the, the programs that we have are, they're wide range. We have healthcare, we have information technology, business and marketing, manufacturing, construction, engineering, agriculture, and new will be our Law and Justice Academy. And the best thing about it is it aligns to, you know, their interests and the career fields that they're digging into. Also, you know, our students have the opportunity to get certifications and credentials, as I was saying, you know, to be able to move into actual career fields right out of high school, or have that opportunity to go to a college level. So here are the pathways that we have currently. As you can see, Pueblo West, they have Law and Justice Academy, but the Creative Academy has a lot of the same pathways that Pueblo County has, with the biomedical pathways, engineering, construction. One of the unique areas that Pueblo County and Rye has, they have the agriculture pathways. I think the thing to highlight the most about the pathways that we have are, are middle schools. We're really looking at aligning our middle schools to the, to our high school programs. And, you know, my team, Gina, she, she's done an amazing job working with, with our academy coordinators or principals to really look at who's trained, so we can create that clear pathway from middle school to high school and get some students completing those pathways moving forward. So I think this is, this is really amazing, the student participation. The numbers are high because the students are taking multiple courses, which is great, more opportunities. And so, if you look at the numbers there, that's outstanding. I almost, you know, more than half of the students are taking CTE courses at all levels. You know, highlighting Rye, there's 255 participants in the agriculture program, along with, you know, their multimedia and engineering program, that's outstanding. All the way across the board, it's truly, truly amazing. But if you go to the next slide, which is feeding that, we have Vineland, Pleasant View.
That's right.
Vineland, Pleasant View, Skyview, Liberty Point, Craver. If you look at those courses and the participation in those areas, there's a, there's a close alignment there. And look at all the amazing programs that our, our middle school students are involved in. And they're growing, and we're looking at growing them. So Liberty Point Element, Middle School International, I apologize. They will have design and modeling next year, and medical detectives, which I think is going to be a great addition to their programs, to also then support them moving into Pueblo West High School. So, I just want to share a few impacts of our CTE funding. We have, these are just, this is just the tip of the iceberg, these are just a few highlights, okay? If you will, we have the PLTW training that all of our teachers get, so we make sure that the courses they're teaching, they're highly trained. The vocational education twice a year, that's for our ag teachers. They're able to go to conferences, professional memberships for their, their specific areas of expertise. And we, all their program purchases, you know, from germination chambers to CNC machines, our broadcasting systems, all the construction tools, microscopes, and of course, our Project Lead the Way curriculum materials. So an area we really want to grow, this is, this is probably the most important at this point. We have those pathways really built out in, you know, biomedical, engineering, agriculture. We're really trying to grow our work-based learning opportunities, and we're actively looking for partners right now. So our current partners, we have some students working within our district. We're trying to continue, start a new partnership with Vision Mechanical. Our students, as we know, with the STEP program, already working with Parkview. And then Fame has a manufacturing opportunity for our students, that's already built in with the partnership with PCC. So there's a lot of programs already started, but what we want to do as a next step is, and this is going to be some summer work for us, is going to be to develop a framework, our own framework for work-based learning, so that way we can kind of work directly with partners, industry partners, for our students to be able to get into those businesses and work with them directly. Because at their senior year, we could provide opportunities for them to flex their schedule to be able to go to like a Haddonstone, for example, and get that apprenticeship or internship opportunity, so they can get paid while learning on the job, right? That's, that's amazing. So, other ways that we're going to grow our CTE programs, really looking at aligning our CTE pathways at all locations. You saw how we're really working on aligning all of those, because that's going to help increase our funding, right? If we can get some more funding there, then we can get more materials, and get more educators, and continue to grow them that way. Another big step for us is really starting to look at, okay, how do we increase our students at the elementary level, the skills that they have to get prepared for our CTE programs? And that's really going to live in project-based learning, because with project-based learning, our students at the elementary level will, will gain not only the content knowledge, but those soft skills, those success skills that we talk about, you know, the collaboration skills, the presentation skills, the self-management, all of those things. One other piece is continue to build our capacity. So at our high school level, as we know, it's hard to find teachers, right? It's, it's tough. So we got to start looking at our good teachers that we already have in our buildings, get them trained in like Project Lead the Way, and that way we have a successor, right? If someone does retire, someone can step in, and those programs will continue to grow. And then continue to build our relationships with industry. I've had the opportunity to present in front of PEDCO to try to recruit some of those manufacturing companies to partner with us. And as I was talking about earlier, about the work-based learning piece, as we develop our own framework, they'd be more likely to partner with us, because really there's a lot of red tape, right? Like, they, they, they look at a 16 or 17-year-old going into industry, and that, that can be challenging. So, how does that look? What is the expectation from us? What is the expectation from them? And really, where can we, we create a good framework to, to meet everyone in the middle, so we can make that happen? Something else that's really helping grow, that's currently in place right now for next year, is our new ICAP tool, which is Major Clarity. And Major Clarity is going to be able to align our, our career plans for our students, starting at sixth grade. So the cool part about that program is that our students will be able to explore pathways, starting in sixth grade, so they can actually dig in and look, oh my gosh, you know, Rye has this awesome agriculture program. That might be something I want to be a part of, or County has that agriculture program. So they can actually see where our courses lie, what school has those courses, which I think is very powerful as well. And last but not least, is our career development with certifications. We're going to look to grow those a little bit more, and looking at some programs to do that. In closing, sorry, it went a little longer than I anticipated. I, I think it's important for you to hear from the students, so we got some, a little montage of students just talking about their experience, and, and I'll close with that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is it supposed to play something?
Does it play?
Yep. I'll have to, because it says in PDF, hold on. I'll have to log in over here.
There was that, it was on the bottom there.
It won't, because that says in PDF. Hold on. Sorry, login. Sorry, my computer's not very quick.
Yeah.
Did you, is that downloading? This Gavin Craig, and what I liked about going to Skills USA is the fact that you were able to be hands-on, and no one was like there teaching you, you kind of had a problem solved, and you were able to talk with other people about what to do. It was just a really fun experience, and picking up.
We learned many things, not just about animals, we got plants and plant science. And then it's like also, you know, the way that you're here, and it's, it's really special, and I'm really lucky to have an opportunity like this in high school. So, I think it's about two days between my skin and biology, and kind of doing labs that kind of are going to be part of my next four years in college are really helpful, because it kind of sets me up for success, knowing a little bit about what I'm going to do.
I would say that I really love broadcasting, just because, especially with our current teacher, Mr. Pacheco, he really teaches you a lot about camera angles. It's great for him to use that to enhance pictures and change your pictures, to make them look like what your high school students are looking for.
Our goal is to stop for me, and I mean, more towards the technology aspects. I think it's very beneficial to do it, and like, see what you want to do, and I'm grateful that our school has all these opportunities to really get to see what you like and what you don't like, because it's what you do.
I'm in Forstel, as well as this program, and that opportunity to just get to know the future career that you want to go into is very beneficial.
And I believe that having your work in this program is very important, because in the real world, we, we, we do a lot, especially in engineering, which is what I go into.
And I'm getting to learn a lot about all the different things in agriculture, whether it's farming, or plants, or.
When things break at my house, I can fix it, because the skills that I've learned from this.
In robotics right now, we're messing with legs, and we get to use our minds, it really makes our minds work.
They're a little confusing, and the teachers are really good at.
I've gotten, like, over the time, I've learned, like, what I wanted to do in life. I guess this program has really helped me figure out what I wanted to do in life.
If you're a junior this year, next year, you can start an, you have this medical place and an interim, and you're going to go to every morning, and they will be able to be a medical, uh, clinic site, and they should be able to sort of be like.
Very cool, thank you. Alright, great information. We're going to go ahead and move on to information from the board and superintendents. We'll start with Rhonda tonight.
Well, I visited Vineland, they had the middle school, they brought the opera to the middle school, which was a great experience, and we saw Romeo and Juliet. I was also able to go to Pleasant View Middle School and Cedar Ridge to, with Kathy at Cedar Ridge to pass out awards for our staff members. I have visited District 70 Online at Pueblo West, which it's come a long way. It's a different place than I recall it being, you know, even a few months ago. Cheryl's really brought a lot of joy, and the kids there are just, they seem pretty happy to be there. It's nice to be there. And then we also had a fundraiser at the Lock and Stick, so it's been a busy two weeks.
Yeah, often with big opportunities come big challenges, and so we're expanding through the state the opportunities kids have at preschool, and that's awesome, that's exactly what we should be doing. But it creates a lot of challenges for us on our end, because with different deadlines for the times that the kids can go to school, and we're going to have to change the times that our entry kids can start, at least for their, their ages. And so, I guess I would just say that that's going to be a big challenge for this school district going forward next year. So, I would ask our teachers and our parents to be patient, and we know it's going to be a great program, but it will be, there will be some difficult times to show we go through with that.
Got to pick up one of these nifty cards at LPE, so I'm excited to be able to use some of that. And I'm excited to start seeing some of these projects with the bond getting going, underway out in Pueblo West. So I'm looking forward to being able to visit some of those and see what we can do. And then, all of these graduations coming up, I'm pretty sure that's next week, right? So it's going to be a really busy week next week, so I'm looking forward to it. That was, that was a very exciting time last year, to get to see those kids walk across the stage. So, I'm very much looking forward to that time. I think that's all I have.
Okay, Kathy.
Okay, well, let's see, after being really sick for two weeks, I, I picked, I picked up pace. Monday, the 8th, I attended the Teachers' Ward at Avondale Elementary, and I was really, really impressed, because they have a geodesic dome out there, where they grow their own food and serve it to the kids there. They had just gone through picking lettuce, and so each of the kids had lettuce to eat with their lunch, which I thought was like fabulous. And he said by, the principal said that by the end of August, that the geodesic dome looks like a jungle. There's so many plants in there. And then on Tuesday, I attended the Teachers' Awards at Sierra Vista, and I can't believe I actually got lost going there, but I still made it on time. I mean, literally, it's 10 minutes away from my house, but there's no backroads to it, so I got lost. But I made it on time, and I met some really awesome, awesome teachers, and it was, it was a lot of fun, wasn't it? And then Thursday, I, we attended the Colorado Teachers' Award Ceremony here at the Educational Center, and it really kind of warmed my heart, because one of the teachers that was honored was Jennifer Harvard, which was my granddaughter's kindergarten teacher. And I absolutely adore her, she's, she's just, she's just a sweetheart. And there was a lot of other, the counselors and the other teachers, they, they all deserve absolutely much kudos for the work that they do. And then yesterday, as Rhonda said, she and I went to Cedar Ridge, and, you know, and man, that was like cracking, and I didn't get enough, so I went back to D70 Online, just to, just to touch base with Cheryl again, because that woman, that woman crackles with energy. I wish I could have as, half as much as she does. So, and yes, next week it's all graduation. It's Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and my granddaughter is graduating, so I throw that in there, so I won't be bored at all.
Thank you. We'll go to John.
Yes, excited for all the graduations, and Rye had a very successful, the first inaugural Hall of Fame banquet, Saturday night, it was a good turnout, and then the FFA had their annual banquet last night. That was, as always, full house, and excited to see the spring projects firing up at the schools and get those things wrapped up, going, and then wrapped up.
Not a lot out of me. PECOG did not assemble, and instead of urban renewal, we had elected official training. And if you've ever had that, that's a zero out of 10, do not recommend. Avoid that one like the plague, but yeah, no, that's, that's all out of me.
Alright, well, I had the opportunity to attend the Pueblo West High School Anniversary Awards, so that was great. We had all the way from five years up to 30 years, so it was nice to see. And I was also able to hand out some awards at the Pueblo West JROTC. They actually handed out 80 different awards, so it was really neat to see.
And I'm looking forward to graduations. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. Up next is a presentation of the Pueblo County High School Health Occupations Student Association trip. Mrs. Baucker.
Hello, so I'm here to ask permission to take my Career Tech Ed students that are in their Career Tech Student Association or Club, HOSA, to their international conference on June 21st through June 25th in Dallas, Texas, in June. So, I have four kids that qualified. I have Amanda Alfonso and Katie Neal qualified in health education. And then I have Olivia Martinez and Sidney Morton, who took first place at state and qualified for Nationals. And it's called Career, it's a Career. And um it's called a career, it's a career poster presentation. And they did the same nursing, which is the sexual assault nurse um career pathway. So um, and they, they did that same presentation last year and got fourth at State and they were bound determined they were going to knock it out of the park. And they took first this year at State, so I'm really proud of them for sticking with it. So um, we travel, we're flying um on Southwest, June 21st. They have their um competitions, the 22nd, 23rd, 24th. Um, well, I guess 22nd, 23rd. 24th is awards if they win and then we come home on the 25th because the award ceremony goes till 10:00 PM on the 24th. So, so that's, any questions?
It's going to be hot?
Yeah. It is going to be hot.
Hopefully have nice weather. A little toasty down there.
Yep.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have a presentation of the geographic boundary map reapportionment. Shannon Bingham.
Well, good afternoon and good evening, everybody. My name is Shannon Bingham. I own a company called Western Demographics. Um, I do planning and uh school boundaries and director of district reapportionments and academic calendars and school start time and all sorts of oddball consulting all over the western US and Alaska. I live in Salida. Um, this is the second time I have done a reapportionment for Pueblo Seventy and I've probably done about 115 of these over the last 40 years. We have been growing. Uh, we grow by about 1.3% per year and have for the last 10 years. Um, Pueblo Seventy is probably one of the most consistent districts in the state as far as how our population looks. Uh, since the last reapportionment, we've grown by about 2,400 people. We've grown by about 1,000 students. Uh, the biggest five-year age cohort in our population district distribution is 10 to 14-year-olds, uh, which is remarkable. Uh, we've gained students and a lot of the other districts that I work for have lost kids. Um, so I've worked for about, I'm working for about 20 districts around Colorado now and a half dozen in Washington State and two in Alaska. And I would say um the population numbers I'm seeing here, together with a district in Washington State, are kind of right on top of the pile as far as how the kid, the student population looks as far as how many children are actually in the district. So um, I was really encouraged by that. Um, school districts are like congressional districts. They have to be reapportioned every four years. Um, we have a fresh census from 2020 that shows how many children live in the, or how many total people live in the physical boundary of the district. We are, I guess, either bundt cake or donut shaped depending upon how hungry you are and whether or not you eat dessert. But um basically Pueblo Sixty kind of carves out the center of our district. So we will always have a radial pattern of representation, meaning if you were to slice up that donut into five slices, they would kind of radiate outward. Um, we have been arrayed that way for at least the last 12 years. Most districts like to keep their historical pattern of representation. And so what I tend to do when I do a reapportionment is um try not to upset the apple cart too much, but comply with the law basically. So two of our districts were off by about four and a half percent, uh, which you can see in this graphic. And one is off by about seven and a half percent. Uh, our growth has been fairly balanced among the districts, but we're still off enough to need a reapportionment. And um I've been an expert witness for the federal court system on this issue. And the parameter that I've kind of helped establish is that you need to be within 3% district to district, meaning the districts have roughly the same amount of people within about a 3% threshold. So um I'm proposing a reapportionment that addresses um four small areas and passes population back and forth between those areas. There is kind of our radial form of representation. You can see there's a little bit of uh comp complexity between District Two and Four. But I would say in 40 years of doing these, I've never unseated a director and have no interest in starting now. So um basically I think that that pattern would require some pretty significant shuffling to get Two and Four where it kind of goes, a- as you rotate clockwise, it would go um one, two, uh, or one, three, two, four, five, as you go around the clock toward Rye. And making that kind of a dramatic change just doesn't make sense to me at this point. Until we see a four-year period where maybe we grow by five or eight percent, then it might make some sense to do some shuffling. But for now, it really um doesn't. Uh, so I just proposed this one scenario. And in the next couple of slides, you can see an area that I passed back and forth. The red lines are the 2016 lines that I drew back when I did the last reapportionment. And you can see that three to two is an area that I would pass from area three to area two. And then there's a four to two and another four to two. Uh, the next slide shows some other areas where in various parts of Pueblo West, we're just moving population between the districts in order to get it to balance and have it where it makes sense. And I can write a credible legal description for the board policy manual so that we can see which streets are in, which attendance areas. Pueblo County is extremely helpful with helping us build an address lookup system after we finalize some reapportionments. So um I can help make that available to the district as well. The next slide shows, I think, the last little area where I moved some population out in this part of the district. And you can see there on the bottom in that District Five, I did a little move from four to five and another move from two to five because the other districts are outpacing District Five from a growth standpoint. And I think that's the last shift. Is there something else on the next page? I think the final population balance gets these between one or two percent of each other. So they'll be pretty durable for the next four years. And um when it comes time to um look at this again, um, we may or may not need to do another reapportionment, but given the fact that there's so much affordable housing in this community and so many young families are moving here to take advantage of all of the things um that are available here, um, I have to think that we'll probably continue to grow. Um, so with that, I'd be delighted to respond to questions and thank you so much for your attention.
Any questions? I don't think we have any right now.
Okay.
Give us time. We'll, we'll get there.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
All right, up next we have a third quarter, quarter, excuse me, financial report. Mrs. Whitman.
Good evening. So our third quarter goes through March of 2023 and. All right, as you can see from the graphs, um, we are trending um normally throughout. We are a little bit lower in our revenues um compared to the previous two fiscal years, but we are at 54 million as of March. If you go to the next page for expenses. Again, we are a little bit lower at 57.6% of 53 million. Part of that is due to the accrued salaries. Um, in the previous two fiscal years, those do show accrued salaries. Um, we are doing it different. And so those will show up in June. Um, and then in July and August, when we pay those out, um, you'll see um expenses dip again. So I'm on the next slide. Uh, you can see just by um the departments and instruction of where we spent our money uh through March. And so again, you can see that regular education has the biggest piece of the pie and then special ed and then it goes into all the different departments. The next one. So with the fund equity, um, I'm not going to go into too much detail. These will fluctuate because of how we receive our revenue or expenses. And so we don't accrue throughout the year, so these will fluctuate up and down. So especially for this year, it will change by the end of June. So some months you will see or quarters, you'll see this higher and sometimes lower. And that's partially due to, again, um, our property taxes as they come in and then whatever expenses that we do have. So this shows all our funds and we're, they're sitting with the fund equities. The next one. And then through March, um, we have spent 45 million um on our bond and we have the 29, 29 million, sorry about that, um, remaining. If you have any questions? I think we're good. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
I like to see short and sweet. Our next item is a presentation of the Coordinator of Facilities and Maintenance Job Description. Mrs. Russell.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Um, yes, I'd like to present to you um a new job description for Coordinator of Facilities and Maintenance. Um, this job um would be under the supervision of the Assistant Superintendent and the Superintendent. Um, a bachelor's degree is preferred in the area of facilities, planning and, and management or um in lieu of a, of a bachelor's degree, at least eight years of experience in that area. Um, the position would be responsible for all actions and activities related to maintaining all facilities within the school district, overseeing the maintenance and functioning of building systems, managing and leadership to oversee a wide variety of program components like custodial and maintenance, operations, building, construction services, district warehouse services and safety compliance. Also to provide direction and guidance for all maintenance activities, recommend priorities for planned maintenance projects within the district, coordinate response and actions for emergency situations, meet and collaborate on a regular basis with the administrative team to address issues um that may develop and oversee all aspects of training within the department. Do you have any questions? I would say that this job does um parallel nicely with the supervisor roles that are already within that department.
Good enough. Thank you. And then you're up next with a presentation of the Insurance Broker Benefits Broker.
Yes, so I would like to give you some information about the broker of record for our employee insurance, including medical, dental, vision and life. So the insurance committee did endeavor through the process of a request for proposal. We posted an RFP. Insurance committee members then worked on subcommittees um to complete the process. Part of our members um were part of the screening team that scored nine proposals that we received through the RFP. They did eliminate three companies based on a rubric and scores from each section of that RFP. And then the other members um participated in presentations from the remaining six companies. Um, the team reviewed each presentation and proposal based on four areas in our RFP. Qualifications, approach to the overall project, price and rate and innovative and creative approaches to meeting various needs of our employee group. Um, our insurance committee would like to recommend Benefits Broker as the broker of record and you do have um uh some information from them at your tables tonight. This insurance company, or a broker company is a local business. They've been in business since 1998. They do represent many local businesses. They represent private and public sectors. Um, they will provide for a strategic planning to review current plans and relevant mo- modifications and enhancements to our programs we offer. They'll provide benefits management, employee call center, assist in billing and enrollment audits. They'll work with HR to provide all employee notices such as COBRA, assist in enrollment and qualifying life events. They will provide administrative and communication support to create custom benefit guides and videos and communicate benefit-added programs to our employees. Uh, they will also provide compliance to, for the HR team in helping us with the calendar of all required communications, update annual required notices and benefit guides and assist with that ACA reporting, compliance and filing. And they also will support employee wellness. Um, the fees will be paid via commission from insurance companies. Um, and what they're proposing for the medical fee, uh, for medical insurance is 1.5% to be adjusted down annually at renewal to offset any increase in premium. And compensation will never increase above 1.5% if the total premium decreases. And then for dental vision and life, that would be commissioned based on the standard level determined by each carrier and the programs that we offer.
They're good. We use those for work. They do a good job. So I think you guys will be happy.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have a presentation of the Revised School Dues and Fees. Dr. Martinez.
I'm going to fill in for Dr.
Mr. Hershaw. Sounds good.
Hello again. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm here to present the revised school dues and fees for the 23, 24 high school um list. So the first one is gonna um cover all of the high schools, which is the concurrent enrollment fee. It will go from 15 to $16. It's just, that's, that's the, the cost that they're, they're charging us for each credit hour that students enroll in those courses. Um, at Pueblo West High School specifically, um, we're going to come, they're combining photography, one A and B to just a $25 fee. But again, these fees are based off of, you know, needs for their programs and that, that's why they're, they're changing um these fees. Uh, something else that's changing is the Manufacturing Construction Technologies and Skills USA costs to $35. Uh, the show choir uniform, it used to be 90 to 100. Now they're, they're increasing just to ensure that they have the range to, to cover those costs for those uniforms from 90 to 175 now. It used to be 90 to just a $100. Um, and then the FBLA club is going to um have a $50 um fee as well. So that's, that's all of the changes for Pueblo West High. Uh, now to Pueblo County High, um, the only change there would be just the concurrent enrollment of $16. And last but not least will be Rye High School. Um, it was already, they're already charging $97 for the AP courses. We're just making sure that that is documented and it's accurate. And then they are dropping the $10 ESS um life skills course fee. And that is it.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have a presentation of the Revised Building Use Guidelines and Fees. Mr. Baumgartner.
Yes, good evening. And this is what happens when you open your mouth in a meeting. They said to take a look at the facility use fees and myself comprised with a few other APs, ADs across the district. We sat down and we started reviewing our fees. We uh had good cooperation with District Sixty on their facility fees, CSU Pueblo, to come up with that. So in front of you, board, you'll see the addition on the fee schedule of the addition of the swimming pool. And then you'll also see some changes on the building use guidelines. Um, and those changes, um, as we looked into it, they didn't have the association with a Parks and Rec program, which we do have a MOU with. Um, so therefore we moved them and categorized them in the correct grouping and in group four. So, any questions? Mr. Padilla or Amanda, anything to share?
Yeah. So, so what, what changes in the fees and.
So the, on the, on the fee, the only additional one that we didn't have for a facility use was the pool. So that bottom green one, all the way across the bottom, it wasn't on our fee schedule at all before. So we added, we added that. So that is the only addition. Everything else in group four, there was nothing that changed there, nothing in the column. Just that.
How much did that add?
So the pool fee, if you look on the bottom for group one, it's zero. Group two, it's zero. Here's a change. Group three, it's 50. There was, there was no fee there. Group four, it's a 100 per hour. And there was no fee there. So basically our district, we didn't have, have the pool associated with our building and facility fees.
Okay, and what constitutes group four?
If you go to the other page.
Well, I don't have any of those.
Okay.
Yeah, you do. Okay, so we're going to be charging anybody that wants to use those facilities.
Per, per group, whichever they align. Correct.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Does it, do you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next, we have an update from PCEA.
I sympathize with you, Kathy, because I can never, like, it's here somewhere. I got it somewhere. Don't, it's not on top. And I'm supposed to speak quick because apparently there's a basketball team playing tonight, so I'm supposed to be quick in my comments. All right.
Make it clear and quick.
So tonight, first of all, congratulations. Everybody mentioned next week's graduations. Today was the last day of school, which my daughter's graduated, so it's a little bittersweet day for me. So, and those students and any student in District 70 that's graduated cannot be where they are today without the teachers who we recognized last week and the rest of the District 70 staff. So tomorrow and Friday, it's a couple of big days for the big team of negotiations. We're grateful to the legislator and the people who lobbied to help buy down the BS factor by $180 million across the state. In District 70, we're getting, we're so grateful for the amount of money that we're getting this year and those additional funds. We begin our interest-based bargaining tomorrow from 2 to 6 in this room by telling stories, looking at, telling story, it's the start of the interest-based bargaining, looking at where we are as a district financially. We did have a great budget summit in April. And telling the story of an economic, current economic state affects our employees' lives currently and how we can utilize those funds to hopefully get a more livable wage for our employees. So my big hope is that between tomorrow from 2 to 6 and Friday from 9 to 1, in two weeks, we come back here with a settlement. It's like totally hopeful, wishing, hoping, crossing fingers. And of course, our settlement begins where we ended last year with steps and lanes, money back into the schools through SBB and restoration of steps for those to make the mall pull.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, so, next up, we have a bond project update.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
If you follow her lead on the hurry.
I hear there's a basketball game tonight.
There's a basketball game tonight. Let's go.
So out on the Mesa, at South Mesa Elementary School, we're finishing up some HVAC work. Pueblo County High School, the AMAC building is at a point where we can take, do the walk for substantial completion. That'll happen tomorrow. Today, we met with Mr. Howes at North Mesa and talked about the ADA bathroom remodel that's going to happen this summer. At Violin Elementary School, we had some abatement done in the library and the computer lab. It's ready for demo. Demo will start on June 5th at PV. June, early beginning of June, we'll be installing LVT in the library area. We also had a visit from the state. We walked the school and we will be moving forward with Area D. As soon as we have pricing on that, that'll kind of come back to you folks. So it's kind of exciting to get that, all those partition walls taken care of and get that area functioning more properly for learning. Out in Pueblo West, so at Pueblo West High School, we have taken the dirt lot and I put the little handy-dandy map that I've been sharing with everybody on your, your desk. So the green area, we took over that area this morning, so there was no parking. It's barricaded off. Mr. Wagner did a great job of getting information out to parents. When I was out there this morning, it was going extremely well. A couple of parents stopped and said, hey, I received the email. I just didn't realize it was this section. So we were kind of helping direct folks to, to get parked and get their students into the building. So after graduation in the purple area, that's part of Phase 1 also. We'll be demoing all that stadium parking lot, moving those boulders to a secure place so that we can use them throughout the district for various landscaping projects. With that, we'll be moving some of this fill that we're taking out from the high school to the elementary school. That'll be at Sierra Vista Elementary School. They'll begin staging heavy equipment in that area so we could begin work this summer in that area. All that heavy equipment will be fenced off and secured. At Liberty Point Elementary School, we've already begun the demo in the library. Carpet's out. We're getting ready to paint. So we're already kind of trying to get ahead of the curve at Liberty Point Elementary School. We also have a bus loop and a parent loop going in there, so there's going to be a ton of work out there this summer. Out in the mountain region, we walked the Rye Elementary School civil project with our principal out there. Work will start right around June 5th when students are out. At Rye High School, the addition, the building addition is on site. We need to move a gas line and we're working on some permitting for that particular work. Bullock K. through 8, we had an insightful oversight committee meeting last night and talked about civil projects and where that budget's at and what we can potentially do kind of in lieu of some of that civil work that includes a little bit of civil work with some ADA parking, some sidewalks to the greenhouse, and a few other things that we're looking at upgrading there. Actually, putting in a new PA system for them. So we'll have a conversation with Mr. Rogers and kind of tease that out. And, but I thought it was a productive oversight committee meeting. At Craver, we'll be mudjacking this summer and finishing up some of the tab on the HVAC and making sure that we're ready to go. And I met with Jody and talked about some items that she would like to have accomplished this upcoming year or so. Any questions for me?
Thank you, folks.
All right, next up is Open Farm. Do I have any comments this evening?
No, ma'am, we do not.
All right. Okay. Our first item is approval of the geographic boundary map reapportionment. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Madam President, I actually move that we table Action Item 9.01 to the next regular board meeting. So we can have time to, and to make sure that's the best option for the district.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table the reapportionment?
So moved.
I'll second it.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up is approval of the Coordinator of Facilities and Maintenance Job Description. Do I have a motion to approve the job description?
So moved.
Mrs. Russell?
I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the Coordinator of Facilities and Maintenance Job Description.
Now may I have a motion?
I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Next up is approval of the Insurance Broker Benefits Broker.
Madam President, I would recommend that the Board approve Benefits Broker as the Insurance Broker of Record.
Do I have a motion to approve the broker?
So moved. I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is approval of the revised school dues and fees.
We recommend approval of the school dues and fees for the 23-24 school year.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the dues and fees?
So moved. I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up is approval of the revised building use guidelines and fees.
I recommend that you approve the revised building use and fees.
Do I have any questions? Okay, got it? Do I have a motion to approve the fees?
So moved. I second.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, Item 10 is approval of the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve these items?
I move we approve the consent agenda items.
I second. Faster.
John Christensen?
Yay.
Chris DeLuca?
Yay.
Kathy Howland?
Aye.
Ann Ouch?
Yay.
A.J. Wilson?
Yay.
Motion carried.
Okay, there's a special board meeting that is scheduled for Tuesday, May 30th at Educational Services Center. And the next regular board meeting is scheduled Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at the Educational Services Center, beginning at 6:00 PM. And we have an announcement.
Yes, Madam President, as you approve the consent agenda items, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gene Padilla as the Principal of Pleasant View Middle School for the 23-24 school year.
I want to thank everybody for this opportunity. Superintendent Ryan, Superintendent Lieutenant, Mr. Smith, you know, this last few years in the facilities department, I've enjoyed this, but I think my heart's in there with the kids. So I'm going to move over there and continue that work. I was able to do the internship with Pleasant View during the COVID year where I was doing two roles. And it was nice to walk in the building today and all those eighth graders out in the building, they still recognize me and they're like, "Mr. Padilla, Mr. Padilla." So it was pretty cool. So I'm looking forward for the opportunity. I'm going to miss working with everybody here on a daily basis, but the building's always open. But seeing Drew talk about CTE programs and what we have to install on those. I'm big on CTE and being able to bring those programs and work collaboratively with County High School and those geodesic domes. That's something that we brought in as a facilities with the SEP project. They want to get those up and working and collaborate with all those geodesic domes and hopefully get culinary arts courses back at Pleasant View and also expand that throughout the, throughout the district. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity and I'm excited about it. So thank you guys very much.
Okay, our regular board meeting is now adjourned.